I'd like to note for the record that Councilman Warren and Councilman Fiole will not be in attendance tonight. I had number one, acceptance of meeting minutes, minutes from meetings of August 2nd, 2016, to be accepted and approved by the town council. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Katanzaro, seconded by Councilwoman DeStefanis. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it? I had number two, liquor license notice was given of a public hearing to be held this date in the Providence Journal on August 19th and 26th, 2016, for a transfer of a BV liquor license from J. &amp; I Restaurant Incorporated, DBA Jackie's Galaxy Restaurant, 1449 Middle Spring Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island, to Athens Diner LLC, DBA Athens Diner, 1449 Middle Spring Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island. Do we have anyone here from Athens Diner? Just please step up to the rostrum and state your name for the record.
I am Michael Kirios.
Marius Kirios? Okay.
Peter Coles.
Okay. You all have the information in your packet. Is there anyone, any questions for Athens Diner?
Make a, make a motion for him to answer.
Mr. President, Councilman?
I do apologize, but I can't find in here, what are the hours on operation for the diner?
Six to 10.
Six AM to 10 PM.
Seven days a week?
Yes.
And confined within the building, correct?
Yes. No outdoors.
No outdoors.
Okay. Okay, Councilman?
I'll make a motion and we make the transfer.
So moved.
Okay, motion's been made for a transfer from Councilman Jussey, seconded by Councilman Brady. Any further questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it? Stay right there. I had number three, victualing license, town council will consider a vote for approval of victualing license from Athens Diner LLC, DBA Athens Diner at 1449 Middle Spring Avenue. Do you have a motion to approve the victualing license pending all necessary requirements?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilwoman Katanzaro. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Good luck, thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
I had number four, victualing license, town council will consider approval of a victualing license for Christine Tito, DBA Tumble Salts Cafe at 1 Morgan Avenue. Does anyone here from Tumble Salts Cafe? Hi. Just please state your name for the record.
Christine Tito.
Thank you.
Bradford Orbin.
Did you say that again, I'm sorry?
Bradford Orbin.
Okay. Everyone has the packets, the information in their packets, is there any questions for?
I just have one question. I also wanted to ask Mrs. Tito, what are the hours that it will be open?
Say that again, please.
Seven to nine.
Seven AM, nine PM. To nine PM.
Thank you.
Mr. President? One of the residents in the audience had asked about parking over there. Would you just explain where people would be parking so he could hear that?
We have 20 spots on site behind the restaurant and then we have about 35 altogether because we are budding neighbors to our own restaurant. The gift shop and the clothing store would also contribute.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, any further questions? There being none, do you have a motion to grant the victualing license pending all necessary requirements?
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, seconded by Councilwoman Katanzaro. Any further questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Guys have it, good luck.
Good luck. Good luck.
I had number five, holiday sales license, town council will consider approval of a holiday license, sales license for Prime Communications, LP DBA AT&amp;T, at 1744 Middle Spring Avenue, unit number four. Does anybody here from Prime Communications? Just please state your name for the record.
Angela Smith.
Okay. Again, everyone has the information in front of them. Is there any questions?
Just, I just do have one question. As far as the hours, will they be the same as your regular hours of business?
Yes.
Okay, and what are those hours, please?
From Monday through Friday, it is 10 to 7. Saturdays is 9 to 6 and Saturdays is 11, Sundays is 11 to 5.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So can you, can you repeat that again, I'm sorry, I missed that?
Yes, Monday through Friday is 10 to 7, Saturdays is 9 to 6, and Sundays is 11 to 5.
And does this, is this, I don't see anything here from the school department approving them to be on the property?
That's the, that's the next item, that's item six. That's the next.
Oh, this isn't done?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, wrong one, sorry. Yeah, I'm on the wrong one, sorry. Okay, um...
It's the school department.
Do I have a motion to approve the holiday sales license?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Katanzaro, seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any further questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Guys have it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I had number six, vendor license, town council will consider approval of a vendor license to Rhode Island Public Health Institute, DBA Food On The Move, at 121 South Main Street, Suite 810, Providence, Rhode Island, to sell at Maryville School at 1135 Middle Spring Avenue. See agreement in the school packet. Do I have anyone here from the Public Health Institute? Just please state your name for the record.
Eliza Cohen.
Eliza Cohen, okay. Is there any questions from this panel, Councilman?
Is this a fundraiser?
It's not a fundraiser, it's a produce market through the, the Health Equity Zone in North Providence. So it's not a fundraiser for the school department?
It's not a fundraiser for the school at all?
No.
Who, who gave you permission from the school department to set up in there?
We've been working with Principal Butler, who's the principal of the Maryville School, and, and I can get you the contact information of the people at the school department level who have approved it.
I think you need more than the principal to, to set up on the property if it's not a fundraiser for that school or for the school department. You're actually operating a business, right?
We are operating, we are nonprofit, we're a 501(c)(3), so we're not a for-profit business.
Yeah, I know, but you're actually a business, though. I mean, you, you, there's nothing in any of my packet, and I think the others are gonna agree with this, that says that the school department, the department, the school committee actually took a vote on this and allowed you people to go on, on, on school property.
I can provide that documentation.
Huh?
I, I can provide that documentation tomorrow. All I was asked was confirmation from the school, but, but I can definitely...
Not the school, the school department. In other words, right now, all you've got in front of us is that the principal said, yeah, okay, you can come in.
Okay, I can, I can follow up and what, what exactly would you need for, to document that approval by the school department?
Mr. President?
Go ahead.
You have to, I'm not done.
I just like to explain, the, the procedure that you probably would have to take, and we can help you with it here, so you're not running around. To go on to the school premises, you would have to get approval from the actual school committee. So maybe what we can do this evening is if we send a letter from the council, because she's asked, actually asking for a, a vendor license, so I'm assuming it would be like a peddler's license. So if we here approve contingent upon the school committee recommending to them that we don't have a problem with it, or we do, whatever we vote on, then she's not having to come back here and ask for something. So I would recommend that we send a letter to the school committee, as long as we're all in agreement that we don't mind that they do this. And one of the other questions is, what were the, the times that you were going to do this?
So, we tend to leave a wide window because when we work with new, new areas, we really figure out what, what is the best time. Right now, we're looking at afternoons from 2:30 to 4:30 once a month, so it's not very frequent.
So 2:30 to 4:30, so it would be just departing of the, the, the school gets out, or I think around 10 minutes of 3?
Exactly.
So it wouldn't be during the school day, you wouldn't be asking to go in the schools to solicit any teachers or anything like that, it's strictly in the parking lot?
Right, and we would be using, we would be setting up a little bit earlier, but we wouldn't be operating until 2:30.
Okay.
See, you understand you still have to go before the school committee.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to follow, I appreciate the, the assistance, I'm happy to follow whatever procedural...
Yeah, we can help with that, I don't see how we can't help with that.
The other thing is, just explain to us, you're, you're not there for a fundraiser for them, and you're a nonprofit, what do you do?
Sure, so we run a program called Food On The Move and we go around the state to community organizations, public housing, schools, and other places, basically to provide access to fresh fruits and vegetables. We also subsidize those vegetables for SNAP beneficiaries. We double the value of food stamps or SNAP benefits for families who need an additional help getting access to fresh fruits and vegetables. And we work with the Health Equity Zone Initiative of the Department of Health, and so they, they have initiated this partnership with, with the school department.
Yeah, and I think maybe, if I may, just interject, part of the reason for that is because of the HEZ grant that Maryville School is participating in to promote healthy lifestyle with increased exercise, with healthier foods, fruits, more fruits and vegetables, fresh fruits and vegetables to introduce to that student population and to those families because of the demographics, the socioeconomic demographics, to, in the long run, promote healthy lifestyles and counteract obesity. So it's, it's very worthwhile, and I think Councilwoman Katanzaro was gonna make a motion that we approve this for you contingent upon the school department, the school committee's approval for the use of that property for that time. You have in your documentation, it would be Mondays, 2:30 to 4:30, and did you say something about flex, it may be more flexible than that?
Yeah, I think, I think we had written Monday to Friday because we hadn't settled on a day.
Okay, preferred day of the week you had listed as Mondays?
The principal has, we're trying to figure out scheduling with, with the school, so they've expressed a preference for Monday. We may try other days as well.
So you may need to come back to us if you're gonna expand the calendar that you're gonna be there.
I think I wrote on our, on our application that it would include Monday to Friday. But we can, we can definitely clarify as we move forward.
Let's start with sending a letter to the school committee before we complicate this too far, as Councilwoman Katanzaro suggested, to get the ball rolling on this. So do you wanna make that motion?
Thank you. So we'll, we'll make a motion to, well first, let me just ask you, Mr. President, do we want to approve it contingent upon and then sending it to, so the motion would be for approval of the vendor's license and sending a letter to the school committee, letting them know that we would also need their consent for this Rhode Island Public Health Institute to be on that property. So I'll make that in the form of a motion.
A second.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilwoman Katanzaro, seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Is there any other questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. I had number seven, extension of existing, existing entertainment license, town council will consider approval of an extension of existing entertainment license to JL Dana Sports Lounge at 1410 R. Middle Spring Avenue on August 7th, 2016, for an outside event. They will not be attending tonight's meeting, so I'm gonna scratch this from the agenda. Okay, I had number eight, economic and financial impact studies receive requests from Gary Allen to appear before the council for discussion and possible vote concerning the economic and financial impact studies for North Providence. Please just state your name for the record.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Gary Allen, by Roger Drive, North Providence. Just wanted to bring up a couple of concerns, actually one big one, and it deals around economic analysis of what's going on in this town. I've been to a number of the workshops that you have on the budgets for the last five, six years, and they're all pretty much the same. Rubber stamp, add 4%, 5% on, you know, find a couple bucks here and there. I'm the only one that goes to these meetings, I can see why because they're, you know, they're pretty uneventful. There's something that's hooked up in the books, it's passed along, you guys look at it, and you do your magic in terms of trying to shave some money on or let things go. It's concerning that I've never heard anything about any kind of an economic valuation or justification of things that have short-term and long-term impacts on the town's operation. And some of those things have concerned me that have gone on in the past. When we did the deficit reduction bond, the towns did the deficit reduction bond to get reorganized, the general came in and said, you know what, this town doesn't know how to run itself financially. This is before most of you were here, or one...
They never, they never said that, but go ahead.
Then, then basically, there was a stipulation that was put onto that deficit reduction based on the fact that the town didn't have financial control or elements to control to run itself. They said, you know what, you gotta do an 8% contingency fund. And you gotta have that because you guys don't know how to run yourself. In essence, that's what they said, didn't say exactly that. A few years later, the state came back and said, you guys don't know how to run your HUD program. We're gonna take that away from you because it's been mismanaging. We lost it for a while, and then it was reinstated, but the town of Johnston is doing the financial management. Over the last eight years, we haven't had a financial, a full-time financial director for six of those years. So, they kind of, that's always been a concern as a taxpayer. You know, we talk about finance, we talk about a lot of money here, and yet we don't seem to have the controls and the plan to be able to manage it so that a taxpayer and lots of taxpayers really know what is going on. And it's, and it's frustrating to, to see that, see that happen. Now, I'll tell you what really tipped the, kinda like the, the tip of the iceberg, finally really said that I can say something. I can't keep this to myself any longer. I got my car tax bill. Other than the fact that I don't like the assessment and what I have to pay, I noticed something on the bill that I'm sure you all noticed. It says here, state aid. Fiscal set 2017, estimated state aid will be $22 million, a 23% reduction. That's $7 million less that we're gonna get from the state. I would wonder why, out loud right now, why something did go up the flagpole with our leaders in this town to say, hold it. We're losing $7 million from state aid, how are we gonna make that up?
I don't think that's just us, though, I think that's...
State aid, you don't think what?
I don't think that's just this town, I think that's municipally across the state.
That's on my bill, it says we get $7 million less, alright? So, as the, if we call it the, the financial minds in the town that's running the town, I would think you would all say, well, wait a minute, we got a, we got, we got a problem. We got a problem coming up, guys. What are we gonna do about it? We should be doing something right now, we shouldn't be waiting to 2017. Maybe we should cut back some of our spending right now. Maybe we should put some moratoriums on some of the things that we can. I'm not hearing that, I don't hear the financial analysis of what I'm hearing, alright? Now, I couple that with a couple other glaring things that have been kicked down the road rather and, and can't go much further. We've got a $70 million OPB fund, this deficit has been for quite some time. And we're starting to, you know, find a way to get some more tax dollars to put into that, but we're way out of kilter on that. How the hell do we get that far out of kilter? That's a, you know, that's a shambles. We're talking about a $75 million potential bond for the school, a 20-year dub bond. And I don't hear any discussion about school department, you know, the town maybe not can't afford that. We gotta find some alternatives. Have you thought about any alternatives? Because I know I talked to the school committee, they aren't looking at alternatives. They're looking at this one way to do it, and that's go get the bonds and build those new buildings, come hell or high water, that's what they want. But as a taxpayer, and we're talking about another $2 to $5 million per year of burden on taxpayers, they're going for it.
Mr. Donald, Mr. Donald, on that right there, Ray, you, if you came to some of the meetings, you would've known that that was already discussed.
You might came to some of them?
Yeah, with, with the school committee here. If you came to those meetings...
I go to the school committee, it's only store.
No, 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 over here. Now, if you came, you would've known that that was already discussed, that they were going to, they, they got this one thing in mind about getting this bond passed. Well, that's up to you as a taxpayer as to whether you wanna pass it or not. That's up to everybody sitting...
Amen.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait, let me finish. This, that's up to every person sitting in this room as to whether they wanna pass it or not. It's not up to us of sitting over here, the seven of us.
No, but it is up to you to hear the taxpayers, and I'm a taxpayer.
Listen to me, listen to me. Whatever you decide, whatever you as a taxpayer decide, that's what we're gonna do. If you say, yes, we're gonna put that bond... Oh, wait a, wait a minute, let me...
One at a time.
Let me finish. If you say as a taxpayer, yes, we're gonna put that bond through, we're gonna go with the taxpayer. If you say, no, no, then that, then that's not gonna happen. I can guarantee you that.
I'm saying, where's the plan? How does that get planned into the overall financial of the town?
Mr. Donald, Mr. Donald.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much for coming in front of us. Since I've been on the council, I know myself and members of this council have attended those meetings with the school committee. I know I presented two ideas to them to look into, so they are receptive to what we are asking. We can't plan for something, we can preliminary plan for something until the voter reacts to it, we can't fully plan on it. So, is it something that we are looking at, you know, where are we gonna get this?
You mean, you, you're the council, you talk about...
Can I, can I finish? Yeah. Where are we getting the money in the event that the bond is approved by the voters? We all looking at that. I know I am. I know it's been discussed in my finance committee, I'll send you the minutes if you'd like. I know during our budget workshops, we've discussed it. We've asked a lot of questions of the school department, they furnished us a lot of information, a lot of the estimates, exactly what they are, they're estimates. That bond is gonna be broken down over a three-year period, so those rates are gonna vary. So, until the voters of this town come November make a decision, there's nothing that we as a council can do other than to preliminarily talk about it and plan for it. And number two, you had stated earlier that there's a lot going on, we're not planning enough, so on and so forth. I, I hate to sound like the mayor, and I really hate to say this, but Moody's and three other reigning agencies would tend to disagree with you.
As far as I'm concerned, you're not, you're not able to, it sounds like you're not able to do anything to influence anything that's going to happen in the town. You are only here to react to whatever's put on your plate.
Well, I can't tell you, what do you want me to tell you? Do you want me to tell you how to vote? Well, I think, Mr. Donald, a couple of things that, from when you were speaking, you mentioned that we haven't had a full-time finance director, and we've had several, three over the last six years that were full-time. All budget hearings are public, we can't control who chooses to come and not to come to those hearings. I wish more people would come, like yourself. You quoted this, you stated that this council can be a rubber stamp, and I tend to disagree with you because I've been involved in five budget hearings, five budgets so far since I've been on the council. One, the first one, was about a day away from going to court, and two other budgets had veto override meetings. So I think the last thing this council is, is a rubber stamp. And last, the $75 million bond for the school department, they wanted us to pass that. They did not want that going before the voters. That was a compromise this council came up with because we simply did not feel comfortable passing a $75 million bond. So the compromise we all came up with was to put it before the taxpayers of this town.
Alright, but what's not happening is that there's no public information that even projects the, the problems, the financial problems or the, or the things that the town has. Everything that I see and hear is, everything's great, we got the problems. I mean, we're in Fat City. We got, you know, but I'm, it's not being truthful, and, and maybe it's not your job. I'm just expressing a frustration, alright? I'm not, I'm not pointing my fingers at anybody here, I'm just saying, look, are you a voice for us, the taxpayers? Can you carry this concern, you know, back to the higher-ups here? Or is that just me knocking on the mayor's door or something? You know, is this the wrong forum for me to be even bringing this up? I'm, you know, I guess I can ask the question that way. But I'm concerned as a taxpayer, everybody I talk to has the same concerns. It's, you know, what, what is going on in this town? Everybody kinda like is, whistle like everything is great, and we have these huge issues coming up financially. They're gonna, you know, they're not gonna go away, they're just kinda like getting bigger. And I don't wanna forget that, you know, we're getting a 4% compounded increase on all of our contracts, on average, every year. And I, oh yeah, and I shouldn't forget, the way we do building permits and, and allow smaller homes to be built on a large home gets bought, and we take one home away, we build five or six smaller homes.
I agree with you.
The problem with that is, each one of those small homes has an average of two kids. And if you do the math, we might get $4,000 for taxes on each one of the smaller homes. But each one of those kids costs us $15,000 a year in school taxes. So we're getting killed in terms of allowing the building going, the building going on that we're doing.
Mr. Donald, but, but you can understand, and I agree with you as far as the houses, putting five houses on one lot, I, I agree with you 100% on that. But that has nothing to do with this council.
It has nothing to do with the council?
No.
Yes.
It has to do with planning our zoning board.
Look, it has nothing to do with the council, the taxpayers got a problem with it.
No, no, no. You, you gotta follow our charter, and that has to do with the planning on zoning board. That has nothing to do with this, this... I mean, you, you're making a joke out of it, and it's not a joke, because I agree with you 100%.
Danny, you're right, you're right. I always, always hesitate to even spend my time to talk in front of the council. Because I'm not looking for a liquor license, I'm not looking for a permit. I'm dreading, I'm...
You're making a joke of us, and, and let me tell you something, I don't take that lightly. You're making a joke of us. If you wanna talk, talk sensible. Talk the right, talk the right, the right way. You're not, you're not, you're not making any sense.
Mr. President?
Go ahead.
One of the things, thank you, Mr. Donald, one of the things that can be done better, and this council has to do along with the, the planning and zoning official, we need to update our zoning laws. It's been a long time since we've done that, and some of those areas would not be impacted by a home and then five homes being built. So that's something that has to be done, and it should've been done a while ago. One of the things that I didn't agree with last year, when we paid off close to $4 million in debt, our debt service bond for the school and our debt service bond for the $10.5 million, there was that extra money that I voted against the budget last year because we knew at the same time we were going to have a future debt service, whether or not the residents were voting on a bond for $75 million, or we had to bring it back to the council to vote, how are we going to take care of the 1930s... or we had to bring it back to the council to vote, how are we going to take care of the nineteen thirties buildings? That wasn't done and that's why I didn't support the budget last year. That one point six million that the school paid off should have been put somewhere to plan. And I have to agree with you and I have listened in a lot of ways about planning. The only way a plan will work, and we as council people need to know this too, and the next mayor needs to know this also, a plan is only good if it's shared with the people who the plan involves. And if we are not sharing what that plan is, where we are today, tomorrow, or five years from now, there's really no plan. Because it frustrates me as a council person that we get annual budgets and that's all we've ever received. An annual budget, it looks the same. So I do have to agree with you that, that the planning portion, um, as far as where we're going to be, and I know we have something on the agenda this evening about contracts. The council doesn't even receive the contracts to correlate with the budget to make sure all the positions that we're being told are in there are actually in there and how much they're supposed to be being paid. So, we can do better. And we do need a better plan for the future of North Providence because there are things coming down the pike that will definitely have an impact on our, uh, taxes.
So what is it I could ask the council?
Can I see your tax bill for just one second? The top part?
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, I'm saying, what, what is the count, I mean-
Can I answer the original question first?
Yeah.
Okay. The twenty-three percent, the twenty-two percent of the total ninety-eight million dollar town budget, that's the amount of state aid. So it's, we were at twenty-three point oh one.
We're gonna get, we're gonna get-
No, 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 no. We currently in that budget-
We're gonna get twenty-two million, which is a reduction of twenty-three percent.
That's not how that reads. That reads that, that total town budget of ninety-eight million dollars, that of state aid, it's twenty-two or twenty-three percent.
Yeah, but just say, but that-
Which is a reduction of the twenty-three point oh one that we received last year.
Yeah.
So twenty-three point oh one to twenty-two point three isn't a seven million dollar reduction.
Reduction is reduction.
But it's not seven million.
All right. It's, it's one, there's other millions here.
It's like less than, it's like less than a hundred grand.
Right, there's other millions.
You do the math.
That's great. It's only, that's only a one dollar increase in tax versus six.
I know, but you asked us to do financial plan. I'm just, I'm just answering you, Mr. Donald.
Is there anything, anything the council can recommend to do in terms of looking at impacts on economic impact studies for the town? For a, you know, a two, a five, a ten-year period or something on, on, on these major changes? I mean, is there anything that you've been thinking of or are interested in or think should be promoted by taxpayer to get some visibility on?
Short of saying it should be being done, it should be being done. That's, that's how any financial institution, um, who has customers, planning, long-term care planning, retirement planning, that's how they run their life through a plan and, and good budgeting. So, yes, it's something that this council should be able to work on, in my opinion.
Okay.
So you want us to put a plan together for less than a hundred grand?
All right.
Well, I'll make a motion to send this matter to the finance committee and we'll study it, okay?
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Council McCannzaro, second by Councilman Brady. Any further questions?
Actually, there is one other thought came to my mind too. There was an ordinance passed on setting up an ethics commission in this town.
It's not on the agenda.
Has it ever been done?
Not on the agenda.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, item number nine, excavation of land trust properties. Town council requested the land trust members be present at this meeting for discussion and possible vote. Item that include the excavation of properties owned by the land trust. Any members from the land trust? Please just state your name for the record.
Kenneth Conti, Chairman of the Land Trust.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Conti.
Can we, um, here, or answer any questions that you may have with respect to the process there previously or some of the points?
Uh, we made, we made some changes to the ordinance. Um, Councilman Juicy is the chairman of the ordinance committee. Uh, would you like to explain?
Yeah, um, Mr. Grimes came before us with a, a change, a modification to ordinance zero zero dash zero two four. Uh, and I've, they've got it at, at the clerk's office if anybody needs it. If you want me to read the whole thing, I'll read the whole change if you prefer to do that.
Yeah, I'm not aware of the news.
Okay. Uh, project management. In order to force the good planning and fiscal practices, the land trust must present a project plan for approval to the town council when implementing, implementing a new project. The plan must include, A, timetable including milestones for each phase of the project with dates. B, total time to implement the project from start to finish. And C, cost for each project phase and final cost. This must be linked to the timetable in A. Motion, ah, that's, we passed it. So, that, that was the new modification to the, uh, to the old-
To the ordinance.
Two oh three N.
So you've already voted on it, approved it and that's-
It will be at the end of tonight's meeting.
It will at the end of this meeting tonight.
All I can say is that, you, that to me is a little more reactive to what's, the current situation that's going on. Um, I think when the land trust was put into effect in two thousand and one, um, there's an ordinance that was presented and any of our actions that we vote on at our meetings have to be presented to the council for approval. Whether it's, um, a small action of clearing a lot or a longer plan, um, of creating a, what we have planned at Hobson, it should be a pocket park. Um, certainly, there's the, um, expectations to create a total plan. You know, at this particular property, uh, our initial plan was to, I mean, the property was overgrown and in order to, um, come up with a best plan for improvements there, we needed to see what we had. We've seen that that property over the last five years has just been inundated with poison ivy. There was a time where I could walk that property, um, to clean it, um, and walk right through it. Over the last couple of years, it's, it's so overgrown, we couldn't even get onto the property. So, the, um, the work that we had done, um, over the summer was, you know, more of twofold. To clean it up initially and get a canvas for us to create this pocket park. While I would have no issues with you approving that change to the ordinance, um, I, I would say that, you know, we, again, we still have to come to you for every step of the way. And the next step for us on that property is to create a request for proposals from landscape architects to come up with a plan and design. The Grimes indicated, um, that the timetable that we had generally spelled out was too long. If we had to go through the whole process, come up with a plan before we could even present, you know, to you to get approved, that might extend that process even longer. We're, we're gonna try and work with them, work with everyone, not just the Grimes, but all the neighbors in the neighborhood. Because none of us live in that area, I certainly don't, and it was never our intention to force anything on the neighborhood. You know, we had a meeting two years ago. We sent out qualifications, we invited, I mean, I mailed over two hundred letters myself. And, um, we wanted to get people to come in and get an idea, get some concepts. I thought that this pocket park was, is actually probably the best concept for that property, um, consistent with the, um, purchase that we made. And the reason that we made the purchase with the prior, the previous owner was to make that property available to the neighborhood and create an amenity. And an amenity that is actually gonna hopefully increase everyone's property values in the area. I mean, parks have shown that, you know, you create a park in a neighborhood, it's only gonna be an amenity. It's not gonna, certainly don't be a detriment.
The only thing, Mr. Conti, I want to ask is once this is passed, that you try and follow that.
Excuse me?
Once we pass this amendment to two oh three N, make, that you, uh, try and follow that as close as you possibly can.
Oh, absolutely.
That's all we ask. And then that would, that would help the neighbors and everything else. And there wouldn't be any, any confusion or any complaints that way.
What is the timetable for the project on Hobson Street right now? Hobson Avenue?
We, we had hoped for a spring, commence spring construction. So we were hoping to use the next several months to go out and get an RFP, come up with a plan, get bids and start construction, you know, in the spring.
Do you think you'd be able to stick to that timeline?
Yeah.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions?
I just have one other question. Um, when you send out a notification, do you, when did you send out the original notification that you wanted to do something with that land? How does that work?
Uh, I believe the land purchase went out like two years.
Okay.
Solid two years ago. And, you know, we meet, we meet ten times a year. So it's a longer process and we have a lot of discussion.
So do you think that, uh, maybe in the future, if there is a, a piece of land, that when you're looking to make a decision on it, it, a notification can go out prior to the meeting that you're coming to the council to request maybe? Because two years is a long timeframe. I didn't know until you just said it tonight that notifications even went out to the abutters. But I think if that's either in your land trust bylaws, I'm not sure if it's actually in our ordinance or not, that notifications do go out to the abutters closer to when you're coming for approval. So then the residents would know, that would indicate that they could come and ask questions at that time too? With your plan?
Certainly with-
Sound fair?
With the, the park, the creation of the park, it's our duty, I believe, to keep the neighborhood informed at every step of the way and potentially get some of the neighbors involved in the selection of what's gonna go there. That would be my goal. Um, the work that we did to clear, clean it up, I mean, I don't think any of us thought that we were gonna have such an outright of issues with cleaning up an area that is, you know, pretty unusable. Um, but it's a good opportunity.
That's, I mean, it just seems like, you know, the line of communication from sending something two years ago, coming to the council if some of the residents enjoyed the greenery, so to say, and then not knowing that you came and we did all approve it to say, you know, go in and there was a plan to, um, you know, clean it up, so to say, but maybe because the residents didn't know? That's all I'm saying, just to have a better line of communication with the people within the neighborhood if we do it closer to. So, and I'm sure we can help at some point too with the, the clerk's office, however that can be done, just so the notification goes out.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any other questions, Mr. Conti?
I, I just have one. We sent a request to the administration to clean the property up. Do you know if they kinda sent DPW there to do that?
Yes, they did. We actually, um, again, the last meeting, the first Tuesday in August when you had the Grimes before you, and none of us were in attendance. The reason that we weren't on in attendance is that we had, um, scheduled a meeting with the Grimes at the property, I think, uh, that Friday. And, um, it was more of a sign of good faith to meet with them. Uh, we met with them with the mayor and the public works director and, um, understood their concern about their loss of privacy with the clearing of the lot and offered, um, to extend their stockade fence along the boundary line to return some of that privacy. And, um, that has since happened. Um, I know that the DPW has also offered to come out and grind some of the stumps and create some, um, wood chip beds within the property to keep the, the growth down a little bit and make it a little more of a, um, less of an eyesore, some of the debris that was, or probably they were also supposed to clean it up. I have not been by the property. I drove by it the other night at night, um, just to see the stockade fence. I noticed that, but I did not notice whether or not the town had done any improvements on the property, but they indicated that they would.
I just want to say-
And I know the Grimes are very happy with that.
I just want to say thank you to you and the land trust members for what you do.
Yes, I thank you for coming out tonight and I just hope that we can stick to the spring timeline to get that property up to where it was planned to be.
Yeah, I think, I think, um, I think it's a great idea that in the last meeting that someone offered to make it a veterans memorial. Um, I think that would be a great, uh, idea to have that property for that and keep it as passive as we can.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conti.
Thank you.
Okay, item number ten, historic cemeteries. Receive requests from Evelyn Wheeler of Rhode Island Advisory Commission on Historic Cemeteries and the Narragansett Historical Cemetery Commission for discussion and possible vote concerning abatement from taxation for the real property on which a historical cemetery is located. Is Ms. Wheeler here? Please just state your name for the record.
Evelyn Wheeler.
Thank you.
I'm here tonight to urge you to follow the, what the general assembly did in two thousand and eleven, passing an ordinance that would give you the permission to, um, do your own ordinance to give property owners with a cemetery on it a tax abatement if they kept the cemetery clean. Um, I think this would give the property owner incentive to clean it up. I've talked to a lot of them and they said, oh, sure, you know, but, uh, we really need to have these cemeteries cleaned because these are the, the people that started this town and the state and even the country, and they should be honored with a clean cemetery. Are there any questions?
Mr. President?
Councilman.
Do you happen to know in North Providence, how many properties do have cemeteries in them?
Nineteen.
Nineteen properties? I knew you'd know the answer, that's why. Nineteen.
One is, uh, church and another one is on rich property and, um, but the others are on private property.
So would that be seventeen?
Yes.
Okay.
And every town or even the state commission would be glad to help the tax assessor. If an, if it's passed and an application comes in, uh, they would go out and take a before and after picture of what has been done and then turn that into the tax assessor. And it's a once-a-year thing. One town capped the abatement at a hundred dollars. And, um, another town, uh, the cemetery commission suggested three levels, like a small cemetery, a medium cemetery and a large cemetery, so that it would be like thirty, sixty or ninety dollars for cleaning that for the year.
Do you, do you know the sizes of the seventeen?
They're all different sizes.
No, I'm not saying right now, but does the commission have that?
Yes.
They do?
If you go onto RIHistoricCemeteries.org. Or just Google Rhode Island Historic Cemeteries and it'll pop right up.
Okay, good.
That's the commission database. Any other questions?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to refer this to the ordinance committee.
I'll second that motion.
And, and finance as well.
And, okay, ordinance and finance.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman McCannzaro, seconded by Councilman Brady. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. We'll, we'll let you know when the hearing is.
Thank you.
Item number eleven, resolution sixteen dash zero zero nine, town's council discussion and vote on resolution sixteen dash zero zero nine concerning town council approval on collective- on resolution sixteen dash zero zero nine concerning town council approval on collective bargaining agreements. You all have the resolution in front of you. Is there any questions?
Mr. President, is this the resolution we're sending to the General Assembly to change the charter? I don't have a copy of it, that's why I'm asking.
Yes, it is.
I just remember, I thought last month we, we did it, no?
It is to go over the senators and local representatives.
And my understanding is this covers all, all bargaining units, including the school department.
Um, Mr. President, the only, the only thing that I would add to this, and I talked to Attorney Welch. When, when this came out of the finance committee, we voted to have all contracts come before the council. Not just labor agreements. So the way that we voted was the administration would do the negotiating and then they would present the contract for us to ratify. Is there a way to change this resolution to reflect all contracts?
My question is maybe a legal counsel can, can answer this. Legally, can we do that without violating the charter?
I think you can't change, you can't change this resolution. I think it's a bigger conversation for another day because I think this charter has a purchasing board provision within it and has provisions for purchases to be made. And combined with forty-five-five, I think it is, a good law, general law on purchases for municipal. So I think that can be a conversation with us. So if you want to do that, councilman, you can look into that and you can just continue this the next month. I think we do general some stuff.
Can we pass them separately? Can we pass them separately?
Oh, yeah. Well, they, because this one is just CBA standing along. So yes, we can talk about it on the next one, yes.
Okay. Do you want to hold, do you want to table this one or do you like to pass this one? All right. Okay, um, do I have a motion to pass resolution sixteen dash zero zero nine?
So moved.
Second. Motion's been made by Councilman Canzaro, seconded by Councilman DeStefanis. Any questions? There be a nun, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number twelve, memorandum of understanding between Rhode Island Emergency Management Agency and the Town of North Providence. Request received from town solicitor Anthony Galone to approve a memor, a memorandum of understanding between the Rhode Island Emergency Management Agency and the Town of North Providence. You all have the memorandum in front of you. Is there any questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman DeStefanis, seconded by Councilman Juicy. Any further questions? There be a nun, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number thirteen, procedure related to abandonment of town land. Councilman DeStefanis requests discussion and possible vote regarding the procedure related to abandonment of town land. Councilman?
Mr. President, I, um, I put this on the agenda this evening because I, I find it somewhat troubling. We, we try to spur economic development in the town. We sell property, we abandon the property, and this council holds hearings. Those hearings are advertised in the newspaper. Um, the public comes to those hearings. In one case, in the last, since I've been on this council, we've abandoned two pieces of property and each time we've had three public meetings on it, three public meetings. This council then voted to abandon the property. And what I'm finding is, in one case, one individual paid for the property and is still awaiting to receive their right of, of ownership because the abutters haven't signed off. And then in another case, we abandoned a piece of property and the individual is looking to move forward to build a wall so his property doesn't erode further into Nemo Street. He's still awaiting for the deed to the property so he can perform work. So what I'd like to do is, I'd like to put a motion on the table that we refer this to the ordinance committee. So that way, when this council votes to abandon property, that vote is final. And that property is abandoned and it moves, and it moves forth with the person that we're, with that person, entity, whatever, that we're abandoning the property to.
Okay, motion.
There is, and I just wanted to add one other thing. I looked this up. There is no state law stating that we have to allow the abutters their rights to have say. I, and I fully understand why we would do that. And I can't find another municipality that does what we do.
What is, uh, why is it really being held up though? I don't understand. Once we approved it-
Because as an abutter, you have the right to, to either sign off on the abandonment or to purchase a portion of the property that abuts you. But in my feeling is you have three, if, 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 we have an entity that's coming before us with a motion, with a motion to abandon, that entity has to do site work, it has to notify every resident around it, and it has to advertise in the Providence Journal, in, in the last two abandonments, they did it three times. We had three public hearings on it. And no one came forth to block either one. And both of them, we, the town has not transferred the deed because we have two abutters who won't sign off on, on the abandonment. So we as a-
So that's the problem. It's not that the town is doing something, it's the abutters you're saying.
Correct, because we afford them the opportunity to do that. So when my, my feeling is-
You want to take the abutters out of it?
We, the abutters have their right to come when the meetings are advertised.
Okay.
And if no one stands and speaks during those public hearings, then why should they, after this council votes, why should they have a say afterwards? So in reality, we are bringing, abandoned two pieces of property. This council voted to abandon. But yet, two individuals have stopped the deeds from transferring. So that circumvents any reason why we would even vote on it in the first place. And to me, that, that's wrong and that should change. So I make a motion to refer to the ordinance committee so that way we change the ordinance, that once this council votes, that vote stands and the property changes hands.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman DeStefanis to send this item to the ordinance committee. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Brady. Any questions? There be a nun, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number fourteen, stop sign. Councilman DeStefanis requests discussion and possible vote regarding placement of a stop sign at the intersection of Atlantic Avenue and Carter Street. Councilman?
Mr. President, I have constituents who live on Carter Street and also who live on Atlantic Avenue that have children that are playing on Atlantic Avenue. They ride their bicycles. Uh, they play baseball on Carter Street. And what is occurring is Atlantic Avenue is a cut through. We've had the police department go there numerous times um, to do traffic details. Uh, the speeding on the, on the road is heavy and the residents have come together. Um, even though they're not too happy with having to put a stop sign on the corner of Atlantic and Carter, they feel that a stop sign is needed to try to slow the traffic down at least. So I request a motion to refer this to the ordinance committee, but also to send a letter to the police department asking them to do a study on the intersection.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman DeStefanis, seconded by Councilman Brady. Any questions?
Mr. President?
Councilman.
We don't do studies anymore in the police department. That's the only problem. I would like to agree with you that they should, but we don't have a traffic division to do that. So...
Well, let's send it anyway.
Still asking.
We'll request this situation because of the safety issue.
I agree with you and I would hope that we would have a, a traffic portion.
At least a recommendation.
Right.
Even though they're not engineers.
I'd actually like to ask them with a letter too, if they would tell us if they could do it, so we could ask them.
I'd like to, um, ask Councilman DeStefanis to amend that motion, just to ask if we can get a letter back from them regarding the situation, a report from them on their findings.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman DeStefanis, seconded by Councilman Brady. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any questions? All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number sixteen, Salvatore Mancini Resource and Activity Center. Councilman DeStefanis requests discussion.
Fifteen, fifteen.
Fifteen. Traffic enforcement. Councilman DeStefanis requests discussion and possible vote regarding traffic enforcement with the Town of North Providence. Councilman?
Mr. President, I put this on the agenda. I know in June you had put the same item on the agenda. We had sent a letter to the police department, but for the last year, I've been pretty active um, with the police department because when I campaigned for the seat that I currently hold, the biggest complaint I received was the amount of traffic. A lot of people cut through our back roads to avoid the congestion on Minnellspring Avenue. So speaking with the chief, I found it, I found that we have two problems. The first is, we created an NPAP program, which I think's incredible. We bring an officer in, we give that officer deep, um, overtime and that officer stands there to control the traffic, you know, lets the constituents see the tr, the, the officer on site and try to fix the problem that's occurring. And in June, we had mentioned Powell Road as an example. The problem we face in our, in our department is, we can't find the officers to do the overtime. So between all of the pipe work that's going on on Minnellspring Avenue, the work that's going on on Monastucket Avenue, as you noticed, we have Johnston cops in, in, in our town, cops from other municipalities. So what I'd like to do is, I would like to do what other municipalities have done, Cranston being one of them. So there's two things I would like to do. I'd like to send a letter to the administration requesting that they work with the union to allow retired officers to come in, in the event that they can't find an officer on our force or an, uh, another municipality to come in. Cranston allows retired police to come in for details. Why can't we bring those police in for the NPAP program?
Is that a motion, Councilman?
That is a motion. That's my first.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman DeStefanis, seconded by Councilman Juicy. Any questions?
Excuse me, Mr. President, I've got to recuse from this item.
Okay. Just note for the record, the Councilwoman Brady's recusing. There be a nun, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it and you, you say you want a second?
Correct. The other thing-
Mr. Councilman DeStefanis, I have one question. In the actual contract, a, a police contract, is there a, um, any clause that says how they have to?
I don't know. I've never seen the contract. So I don't know that. I know that Cranston, um, in their last negotiation, made changes to their contract to allow, you know, so the way it works is the current officers on the force get first shot. Neighboring officers from other municipalities get a second shot. In the event that no one can fill the vacant, the, the over, you know, the requested shift, they'll bring in a list of retired officers that they have. And, um, it's worked out pretty well there from what I understand from them. And I understand Johnston also allows it.
I just want to make sure what I voted on is something, a letter that's going to say that it, it's, it's like in line with the contract that they currently have and-
But that's why I mentioned the letter to the administration to work with the union because I'm sure the union's not going to allow someone doing details that's not part of the collective bargaining agreement. So...
That's all I wanted to make sure. That's what I voted on, so it wasn't more grievances. So, thank you.
And then, Mr. President, the second thing is, after talking with many municipalities, I found out that they do activity reports. So you, this council sends a request to the chief of police to, to look at an intersection. So they, the chief of police, you know, I don't know, I'll take Atlantic and Carter for example, does a detail, you know, an accident in, you know, public safety detail at Atlantic and Carter. An activity report is generated and it is sent to the constituents, it's sent to the elected officials who re, who requested it, and in this case, that would be us, explaining how long the off, when the officer went there, how long the officer was there, how many tickets were written, what residents came out to complain. So that way you can go back to the constituent and say, "Hey, look, here's what happened. Here's what you requested. Here's what we've done about it. Here's what we're doing about it." So right now, I think that I'd like to, a motion to send a letter to the police department to start creating activity reports that when we send requests to them to be part of the NPAP program, when we identify intersections for the NPAP program, that we receive an activity report back telling us exactly what happened.
Okay, is that a form of motion?
It is.
Okay, Councilman DeStefanis, submit a motion to send a letter to the police department asking for activity reports. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Juicy. Any questions? There be a nun, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number sixteen, Salvatore Mancini Resource and Activity Center. Councilman DeStefanis requests discussion and possible vote regarding the Salvatore Mancini Resource and Activity Center. Councilman?
Mr. President, uh, I put this item on the agenda. I'm actually passing out what was afforded to me by, um, someone. So within the last year, we have had, last year and a half actually, we have had, um, some questions for the senior center. I'm sure everyone here knows what's going on. We've asked them a slew of questions. They hired an attorney, whatever the case may be. But there has not been too cooperative an agreement, um, between the administration and the senior center. The thing that I don't, um, that I find a little troublesome is, back in two thousand seven, the council at the time had similar questions that we had last year. And the council at the time signed a memorandum of understanding with the senior center, which basically breaks out that the council, that the senior center will provide the council with official minutes of all meetings, except those in executive session. The council will receive monthly financial reports of all account balances, you know, a copy of its annual financial audit we, we receive. Um, so this memorandum of understanding that was signed by Mr. Fishback, who's still the chairman, by the mayor, and by the council president at the time, has not been followed. And I don't understand why this all of a sudden disappeared and no one decided to follow it. And I think last year, during all of the questions that were being asked of the senior center and all of the back and forth that occurred and an attorney got put forth and, you know, both entities ran to court and a judge had to decide what occurred, I find it a little bit troublesome that we were supposed to be receiving monthly financial statements, that we are supposed to be receiving monthly minutes to the meetings. Because in two thousand seven, the question was asked, "We provide you funding, show us what you're doing with it." And here we are, two thousand sixteen, and this memorandum of understanding isn't being followed. So I asked that we send, I put a motion on the table that we send a letter to the administration and also the senior center, asking them to stop following the memorandum of understanding that was signed in two thousand seven.
Uh, Mr. President?
Councilman.
Yeah, um, Councilman, I just have, have a concern, not about the content of what you said, but I just wondered, has anyone from the council notified the board at the senior center of this meeting in order that their due process rates would be satisfied because it would seem that if we're going to discuss this, um, I'm going to make a suggestion to you that we postpone this for another meeting, for our next meeting and send notification to the senior center so that they'll have representation when this is discussed.
Councilwoman, I, I respect your opinion, but I didn't notify the administration either that I was bringing this up. So I'm faulting both of them. So-
Maybe we could have all parties here next month?
Well, I, I'm just sending a simple letter, "Hey, you both sign this memorandum of understanding. Let's start now living up to it." I don't, I'm not looking for the administration to come in and the senior center to come in and say, "Hey, here's why we're doing it or not doing it. It's agreed upon. It's signed. Let's start living up to it. Let's be more transparent with the taxpayer on both sides." it. Let's be more transparent with the taxpayer on both sides. So I have a motion on the table that we send a letter to the administration and the senior center, asking them to start living up to this memorandum.
Councilman, I have a question. Does this article coincide with this?
Correct. That's what made, the article was given to me, and that's why I had requested of the town clerk's office to provide me any and all meeting minutes and information during that timeframe, to which I do have a transcript of the hearing that occurred concerning the memorandum, and also the minutes to the meeting for the night it was passed on August seventh of 2007, to which the senior center, the council in 2007, and the administration were present, and no one disagreed with it. Henceforth, they all signed it.
Mr. President?
Councilman?
I think what we have to make sure, because we didn't have this prior to the meeting tonight, because there's an actual grant application process, we have, and that's the law, a resolution technically isn't the law, it's just, like it says, a memorandum of understanding. We have to make sure before we send off a letter, and let's communicate properly here, that we want them to review what Mr. Distefanis is saying. We also have to make sure that our legal counsel makes sure that what is in this coincides with the ordinance that we passed for the grant application. Because if we just, if we just...
We don't have legal counsel in this situation.
Yes, we do. We have a Mr. Dis... Sisto?
Sisto.
No, he was the legal counsel for the grant application, not for the senior center matter.
Right.
We never hired, we never hired legal counsel for the senior center issue.
No, but this isn't a senior center issue. What I'm saying is, if, could I finish, please?
Yeah, you're more than welcome to.
Okay, thank you. So what I'm trying to say, what I'm trying to say is this. I can already see one thing in here that may not be right about the lease or the ninety percent. We just have to make sure that this coincides with the actual grant application. That's all I'm saying. We can't send them a letter and say, hey, follow this, when what we actually passed in the grant application might not be exactly this. That would trump this. So let's make sure we cross our Ts and dot our Is, that this is coinciding with the application process. That's all I'm saying. I'm not against it, but let's make sure they correlate before we just throw something out there to say, here, follow this. That's all I'm saying.
Mr. President, here's my question. Every time we get into something concerning the senior center, it's like a kumbaya. We gotta bring this one in, we gotta bring that one in. I didn't sign this. I wasn't here then. This was brought to my attention. It's signed by Mr. Fishback, who's the current chairman. It's signed by Mayor Lombardi, who's the current mayor.
Yeah, we know that.
This isn't, this isn't a memorandum that, that I put forth. This is a memorandum that the senior center, the council in 2007, and the administration agreed to. And I don't think it's far-fetched.
I didn't say it was far-fetched.
So I don't understand why it is that we have to sit here, put this on hold, to bring everyone to the table. So what, they could stand there and say, oh yeah, I forgot about that? It's a simple letter. It's a letter to both parties to say, you entered into an agreement, let's live up to it. Period. It's called transparency.
We just have to make sure, because we changed the grant application, it coincides...
And the grant application has nothing to do with this. The grant application is a questionnaire asking you what you're gonna be doing with the funds. So every year, the senior center and any organization could come in and pull a grant, telling us what they need the funds for. That's all the grant application is. So again, Mr. President, I have a motion on the table requesting that we send a letter to the administration, and we send a letter to the senior center, asking them to start living up to the memorandum of agreement that they entered into.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Distefanis. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Juisty. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
I'd like to make a second motion, Mr. President.
Wait, wait, wait. What happened to that motion? Did the motion pass?
A roll call vote. Councilman, Councilman Distefanis?
Aye.
Councilman, Councilman Brady?
Nay.
Councilman Juisty?
Aye.
Councilman Canzaro?
Nay.
And the chair votes aye. So, motion passes three to two. Councilwoman, go ahead. You can make your second motion.
Um, I'd like to make a second motion, please. Along with this memorandum of understanding, I would like to send, I would like to send this along with the grant application to the legal counsel that we had used prior, Mr. Disisto, and ask if they're, if the two correlate with one another, to make sure what we're asking them to do with something that was done in 2007, to the new grant application process, if they see any inconsistencies in it, before we're just demanding something that happened nine years later. So I'd like to make that motion to send a letter to Mr. Disisto.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Canzaro, seconded by Councilman, Councilwoman Brady. Any questions? All those in favor sending a letter to Mr. Disisto?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Yeah, do a roll call vote. Councilman Distefanis?
Nay.
Councilwoman Brady?
Aye.
Councilman Juisty?
Nay.
Councilman Canzaro?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. So that passes.
So just so I understand this, we're sending a letter to Mr. Disisto to give us a legal opinion on something that was signed nine years ago, but yet our charter's been in effect for what, a hundred years? Should we send him a letter asking him if anything in that charter that was written a hundred years ago, we shouldn't be living up to?
Well, I think it, I think it's pretty, you know, I always like to be consistent. We voted on a resolution earlier ratifying contracts. That was passed by the council, and I wanna say 2000, it was signed by councilman, the council president at the time, Bobby Ritchie, and I don't have the year in front of me.
I think it was '04?
'04.
That was never, that was never passed nobody, the general, the general assembly never passed it.
Okay, but we, this council still passed a resolution. So, I mean, I'm supporting this resolution because it was signed by the council president and the chairman of the board, but I do wanna see, make sure it does, you know, coincide with the grant application we passed.
Thank you.
Okay.
I got, I am, I got more.
Oh, okay.
So, Mr. President, the other thing that struck me as odd was, a constituent contacts me, sends me the newsletter, and wonders if the bus is gonna pick her up. So, I asked this lady, what are you talking about? And she gives me this info. And then, the bingo thing came up, and I'll get into that in a minute. So I'd just like to read something because this council restored thirty thousand in funding to the senior center. This council did not cut funding. Let me make that clear. We restored thirty thousand dollars that was cut. No. Dear friends, and I won't get into the beginning part, transportation is one of the most important resources we offer to our members. However, due to the recent thirty thousand dollar decrease in funding received through a grant from the town of North Providence, mind you, we did not cut them, we restored thirty, our board of directors has been forced to institute changes to the transportation services provided by our members. Effective July first, transportation services will no longer be provided. Mind you, the newsletter's dated August nineteenth, so effective a month and a half before. Effective July one, transportation services will no longer be provided on the days our bus driver Laura is out of the office. We do not have the necessary funds to hire a per diem bus driver on these days. Councilwoman Canzaro contacted our organization to express her concern when she learned of the change to transportation services. Through her efforts, Councilwoman Canzaro has volunteered, has identified a volunteer per diem bus driver to provide transportation services to our members during July and August to ensure there is no interruption to our members. What I don't understand is, one, we did not cut funding, we restored thirty thousand dollars. Number two, Councilwoman Canzaro, I think it's great that you did that. But what I find a little disturbing is, we have, this council has an individual that has ties. We have a liaison, they have a liaison on this council. It's never been brought to their attention that they needed to cut funding. They've never stood here and explained to us, hey, you know, we got cut, so we're not gonna be able to have a bus. We're not gonna be able to pick up the residents of this town with the bus that's provided by the town, the gas and the maintenance are paid for by the town. Secondly, I don't ever remember receiving a call asking for a donation. I don't think anyone up here ever has. And again, no one has come to us. The other thing I find funny is, we have a free end of the summer bingo bonanza, not a bingo, a bingo bonanza, on August twenty fifth at twelve noon. Five hundred dollar grand prize and a gift card will be given out every half an hour. Now, I know this isn't a lot of money, but if you're cutting the resident's bus driver on the days Laura is out, 'cause you can't afford to pay for a per diem bus driver, where are you getting the five hundred dollars in the gift cards to give out every half an hour? To me, I hate to say it, but it's a little strange. Secondly, it just so happens to be the day one of the political candidates for mayor ran their senior day, which I find a little strange. So, we have a memorandum of understanding with the senior center that says, we will not engage in any political activity. We have a senior center that's basically stating, we have to cut the bus, so you're gonna have to walk, because we can't afford it. Never reached out to anyone on this council, who by the way, restored thirty thousand in funding. And then they threw, they're broke. They can't afford the bus driver. But then they threw an end of the year bingo bonanza, and gave out five hundred dollars, which how much could a bus driver be for the day? Couple of hundred bucks, that's two days, in my opinion. Plus the, everyone attending will receive free bingo special for a chance to win the five hundred, a door prize ticket, and a chance to win a gift card every half an hour. Plus they'll get a free dabba. So, I don't know what that costs. Let's say that's six, seven hundred bucks. That's gotta be at least a couple of days of a per diem bus driver. Am I wrong? So, I find this strange. You complain to your members that we cut you, and you can't give the bus out, you can't ride the bus on certain days, 'cause we can't afford it, but come to us, 'cause we're gonna have a bingo bonanza. To me, financially, I think that's questionable. So, I, I just, I don't wanna, I didn't put this on the agenda to send a memo or anything. I just put it on the agenda to say, I think the whole thing's wrong. This council didn't cut the senior center a dime. We gave them an additional thirty thousand dollars. And I, I don't think that this is adequate, and I don't think this is the right thing to do when you're playing, when you're utilizing taxpayer funds at all. That's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you for the time.
Okay. Ed. Number seventeen, cul-de-sac in vicinity of Plymouth Road. Councilman Canzaro requests discussion and vote on repairs needed to add a cul-de-sac in the vicinity of Plymouth Road. Residents may be present to speak on this item. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Mancini was not able to attend this evening. Uh, this is in everyone's packet. There are about eight residents who live in this vicinity. I know the president knows exactly where I'm talking about. There's a, there's a round stone with some trees in it, and it's just falling down and falling apart. And the residents wanted to know if they could take it down, because the ring is damaged, and they wanted to just fix the area up themselves. So, what I wanted to do was send a letter to the DPW and ask them, along with the administration, and ask if they would be willing to remove this ring, and if not, if it would be a problem, if the residents took it upon themselves to take it down, and then they maintain that particular area. Man, it's right in the middle of the, the road.
Councilwoman, wait, just, where's Plymouth Road?
Um, if you're coming off, off Smith, or you go up by Stephen Only School, and you stay to the left, you go up to the top of the hill, it's after dawn on the right.
I know.
There's a, a big ring in there, but because it's crumbling, it's hazardous.
Is that on the road itself?
It's in the middle of the road.
How come we don't take it down?
Um, that's what I'm asking. Because it's crumbling, and then the trees are dying, they wanted to, you know, maintain it.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman?
Yeah, I went by the area today and looked at it, and it is in need of either being repaired or dismantled and made part of the street on that cul-de-sac. So I second your motion to send that letter.
Yeah, I would, I would send that letter to the administration.
Yep, I said administration and DPW, but also asking them to respond back if they are not going to do anything with it, if the residents have the permission to do something with it because of the number of children in that area, too. It's a very heavily, a heavy area for children to play in, so...
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Canzaro to send a letter, see if our DPW can rectify this issue. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any other questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Ed. Number eighteen, DOT recommendation for Atlantic, Whipple, and Gainer intersection. Councilman Canzaro requests discussion and possible vote pertaining to the DOT recommendation regarding safety issues at the intersection of Atlantic Boulevard, Whipple Avenue and Gainer Street. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Several months ago, we received information from Steve Prestawa at the Rhode Island DOT, and they had made a recommendation that was not conducive to the business owner on the side. They wanted to make Whipple a one-way and a very, very short portion of it, and the business owner was opposed to that. So I went back to the state, and I asked them if there was anything else that can be done within that area. And what they suggested is that the town can submit a Rhode Island DOT traffic to the traffic safety and road safety assessment division. And what they do is, it's a collection of stakeholders typically consisting of the DOT, Federal Highway Administration, the town police, and Public Works, and other interested stakeholders. What they do is, they look at crash history and additional data history, and then they make recommendations other than the one that they made us. So, I know we met in the ordinance meeting with Councilman Juisty, and that's on his ordinance committee report. So, that is the recommendation from the state. So I'd like to make a motion to send that letter out to the state, also to the Public Works director in the police department, asking them if we can all get together for this traffic safety study.
Second.
Okay, Councilwoman Canzaro's made a motion, and seconded by Councilwoman Brady. Any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? You guys have it. Okay, Ed. Number nineteen, board appointment. Town council discussion in action with regard to the appointment of a minority member to be made to the North Providence Planning Board.
Uh, Mr. President?
Yeah?
Make a motion that we appoint Stephen Barwick.
I'd like to thank Brenda Snodgrass for getting us this, Mr. Barwick, um, just the resume, and I got your message, I thank you for that. Okay, if you wanna come up to the microphone and introduce yourself. State your name for the record, please.
Steve Barwick.
Okay, you have, we all have Mr. Barwick's resume. Is there any questions for him? We just thank you for coming out.
Appreciate it.
Impressive resume. I know he'll do a great job.
Okay, motion's been... Okay, motion's been made by Councilwoman Brady, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman DiStefanos, any further questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good luck. Item number twenty, claim submitted, town council discussion in action with regard to claim received from Eric Coppinger by Robert J. Levine Esquire, 544 Douglas Avenue, Providence, Rhode Island, 02908. Do I have a motion to submit the claim for Mr. Coppinger to the Claims Committee?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Canzaro, seconded by Councilwoman Brady, any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number twenty-one, ordinance committee report, town council discussion in action with regard to the ordinance committee report to be presented by Councilman Juicy. Councilman?
The first four, three items on the agenda for the ordinance committee is pretty straightforward in the, in the minutes. The fourth one I wanna discuss a little bit is concerning the group-up. Apparently, Mr. Westguy is going before the planning board on September 14th, and he's gonna submit all the changes necessary at that point in time. So this would carry over to the October meeting, at which time he will submit all the changes, I think, to zoning also.
Thank you, Councilman Juicy. Yes, we will be considering zoning changes. Kelly Morris is drafting some of the zoning changes, and I have drafted some of them. For example, there's no reason you should have to get a special use permit to put a single-family residence in an RG zone. It's an unnecessary burden on private homeowners, property owners who wanna build a single-family home. The one ordinance has been, right now, we ban breweries across the board, prohibited in all zones. We had an applicant come to us and ask if he could build what we now call a microbrewery, less than fifteen thousand barrels a year. So, another modification would be, you know, when, when our zoning ordinance was passed, the brewery was like Marigan's Brewery, it was a massive thing with huge tanks and steam and yeast, and nowadays, a brewery is a very small operation. Pawtucket has three of them and active and two proposed, so we thought, if instead of a blanket prohibition, we might make a, subject to a liquor license from the council and a special use permit, so that if there's any problem, they could be suspended. And then there are fourteen changes that were part of the comprehensive plan initially that we've taken a little too long to implement, and we'd like to move forward with some of those. So, those are the changes. That's not necessarily every change, Councilman DiStefanos and I discussed, there are other parts of the zoning ordinance that may actually need to rewrite. Our sign ordinance is in desperate need of some attention. But what we'd like to do is, is start by making the patches that we know we need, and then move on with other changes that might take a little longer and become more sophisticated. Thank you for your time.
So, I just want everybody to understand that the actual hearing will not take place until November.
Oh, how come?
Because he's meeting on the 14th, and he's gonna submit the change on the next meeting in October, and we're not gonna have enough time to advertise for that, because he's meeting on the 14th. So, I don't know if that's gonna hurt, have you been in touch with, uh...
Mr. Dalton?
Yeah, whatever.
Yeah, I believe he knows the schedule, we've talked about it, and he knows this is not a fast process, but either way we do it, I mean, if it came directly to you, you'd have to refer it to the planning board, and then the planning board would have to approve it and send it back to you. So one way or the other, we gotta spend, we gotta have our hearing, and you have to have your hearing. There's not much we can do about that process.
I thought we, we discussed it that night, that we were able to...
I know, and that's, you know, that was all working all fine, until I found out he's not meeting until the 14th, right? So...
Right, but he said it that night, so we were trying to expedite it for the business owner.
He's not.
Well, the thing is, I don't think you can advertise the amendment until the amendment is a public document and is available. I mean, you can't put an ad in the paper and say, "We're gonna just, we're going to have a hearing on this amendment if there is no amendment."
Right.
You have to have the amendment first.
Right, so if that's the case, let's just think this out so we can help the business owner. If they pass it on the 14th, right, and we get the amendment from you on the 14th, we have to have a hearing...
Realistically, the 15th, but you know what I'm saying.
Right, sorry. So we get it on the 15th, would we either have a special meeting, so it's before November, or could we just advertise it on the 15th? Does that still give us enough time?
If, if the gentleman running the group-up has no problems with this, then I would say we just go through the normal process and...
And the normal process, I agree it's a bit onerous, but it is intentionally, according to state law, that in order to change your zoning ordinance, you must advertise once a week for three weeks in the paper of general circulation.
Right.
And then hold a public hearing, and then you may vote to change. I'm aware that that can be an onerous process, but I think it's intentionally that way to avoid frivolous changes in zoning.
I would be open to a call on a special meeting though, if need be, because I would like to expedite this process for this gentleman.
Thank you.
But I don't think he's gonna have the time.
We always wanna, we always wanna business to come to town.
Let's discuss that on the 15th, when we have the amendments ready to go.
Sounds like the plan.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Westguy.
All right, so everybody understands what's going on with this. So I'm gonna recommend that we accept the minutes of the ordinance committee as submitted.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy, seconded by Councilwoman Canzaro, any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number twenty-two, tax addendums, town council discussion in action with possible vote regard, with regard to the list of tax addendums received from acting tax assessor in the amount of fifty-four thousand, five hundred and three dollars and seventy-two cents for motor vehicles. Motion to...
So moved.
Second.
Mr. President, what, did someone know why it was so large? Did there was mostly, say, errors on them?
I do not have that information in front of me right now.
Yeah, I didn't either. Does anyone have that information in front of them?
Uh, the letter says they represent bills erroneously sent by other communities which belong to North Providence.
Bills that were sent to other communities that belonged to North Providence?
No, bills sent by other communities which belong to North Providence.
Okay, thank you.
So we have a motion to adjourn, fifty-four thousand, five hundred and three dollars and seventy-two cents. Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy, seconded by Councilman Brady.
Wait, 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 Mr. President, it's only, it's forty-five hundred, three dollars and seventy-two cents.
I have the wrong.
I got fifty-four thousand.
On the, on...
I'm looking through the news.
No, I know, but the information that was provided to us in item number twenty-two, if you go to the detail of abatements...
It's not an abatement.
Addenda, I'm sorry, addenda. You see that the list totals forty-five hundred...
Right.
And three dollars and seventy-two cents. So not fifty-four...
Right, that's what I was asking.
Oh, I thought you meant was the, the, how did we get to the fifty-four hundred?
Right, well, no, it says fifty-four thousand, five hundred and three, and that's an awful lot for automobile addendums.
Yeah, we thought you meant, like, how did he come up with these figures for each individual person? Like, that's how we thought, that...
No, I meant the amount.
The total.
'Cause I don't have that.
What is, do I have the wrong item?
So you have the correct item, I just think that when it was typed, when the agenda was typed up, the five was erroneously put in front of the four.
I don't think we can approve it. I don't know, just in case.
Okay, do I have a motion to addend the four thousand, five hundred and three dollars and seventy-two cents for motor vehicles?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made by Councilman DiStefanos, seconded by Councilwoman Brady, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number twenty-three, tax abatements under one thousand. Town council discussion in action with regard to the list of tax abatements under a thousand received from act, from the acting tax assessor and the Board of Tax Review, in the amount of three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-five cents for real estate, three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety-five cents for motor vehicles, and one thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents for tangibles. Do I have a motion to abate three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-five cents for real estate, three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety-five cents for motor vehicles, and one thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents for tangibles?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy, seconded by Councilwoman Brady, any questions? There being none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made by Councilwoman Canzaro, seconded by Councilman DiStefanos.
I'm gonna give that to Troy.